Alleluia, amen. Tonight we'll be talking into the same subject matter that we started many weeks ago on church governance. We looked at sevenhood last time and many things were pointed out by the Holy Spirit using the vessel on sevenhood, amen. Maybe before we can embark on today's topic, can we look at the scripture in the book of Revelation, chapter 22, beginning from verse number one to verse number five on the screen, please?
The book of Revelation, chapter 22, verse 1, from the NIV. "Then the angel showed me the river of the water of life, as clear as crystal, flowing from the throne of God and of the Lamb. Down the middle of the gray street of the city, on each side of the river stood the tree of life, bearing twelve crops of fruit, yielding its fruit every month, and the leaves of the tree are for the healing of the nations. No longer will there be any curse; the throne of God and of the Lamb will be in the city, and his servants will serve him. They will see his face, and his name will be on their foreheads. There will be no more night; they will not need the light of the lamp or the light of the sun; for the Lord God will give them light, and they will reign forever and ever."
Give us focus in verse number four, please. "They will see his face, and his name will be on their foreheads." And also give us verse number five. "No longer... there will be no longer night; they will not need the light of the lamp or the light of the sun; for the Lord God will give them light, and they will reign forever and ever." So this is the eternal state whereby the apostle John is giving a glimpse of the throne of God and the waters that comes from the throne of God flowing. And he gives us an indication that on either side of this river there is the tree of life. And then he speaks about, yes, he says, "This tree of life, it yields fruit every month." And further on, verse number three, he says, "No longer there be any curse; the throne of God and of the Lamb will be in that city, and his servants would serve him." That's where our focus is, that even in our eternal state, we will never be God. But our eternal state is that God will remain God, and we are going to be his servants forever. So that is where we are going to, alright? So now, this is a narrative that is written out of time, giving us focus as to where we are going as the church. So we will be servants, and we will be forever with him. So it means it's a destiny that we are being propelled to. We are being nurtured, we are being grown, we are being matured towards being servants, right? So it means for us to be in line with what God does. This is his purpose, alright? So it means our eternal state is that God will remain God, and we shall be his servants forever, amen. Now, the book of 2 Peter, chapter 1, verse number 2. When Apostle Peter, show us verse number one, please. He says, "Simon Peter, a servant and apostle of Jesus, to those who through the righteousness of our God and Savior Jesus Christ has received a faith as precious as ours." So now, look at how he greets. He is not exalting the office, right? He says, "Simon Peter, a servant." So now, those are the marks of the people who have stayed with the Lord for a considerable amount of time. These are the marks of the people whom the Lord has poured himself to. So that when they open their mouth, they open their mouth, they speak from the end, right? So he says, "Simon Peter, a servant, then an apostle of the Lord Jesus Christ," right? So now, the word of God says, "Out of the mouth..." The mouth speaks from the overflow of the heart. So now, we see the heart that is saturated with the weed. So what comes out first is sevenhood, right? So now, the church, the foundation of the church is built upon what the apostles and the prophets. So it means this is base, so right? So sevenhood is base. So it means if we are to be able to fit into this building of the Lord, because the church is the Lord's concept. Remember what the book of Hebrews says. Hebrews, chapter 8, verse number 5. It's the narrative in the New Testament, okay? Because the writer of the book of Hebrews is giving grace to breach the old and the new covenant. So in that section, he speaks about Moses, that he went up to the mountain, and the Lord showed him the pattern of the tabernacle, right? So the tabernacle is a concept, or rather, it was a dwelling place for God amongst men. And you see that for it to be built on earth, no man could ever be able to get its dimension or its pattern. But men had to come out, and God has to show the tabernacle to Moses. And then he had to come down and build it. So now, the instruction was to say, he had to build according to the pattern that he saw in the mountain. So he did not have to act anything. So he had to relay as it was, as it was shown to him, okay? So now, what the tabernacle was in the Old Testament is what the church is today, right? So the church is God's idea, and it is founded upon the revelation through the apostolic and the prophetic, as we alluded to earlier on. Now, the point that we are pointing out, the point is a sevenhood, that in order for us to line up within the frame, or rather, the pattern of the Lord in his house. Because Isaiah, chapter 9, verse number 6, he speaks about the coming of the messianic prophecy. He says, "For unto us the Son is given." Okay, the child is born, and the Son is given. "And the government shall be upon his shoulders," right? So it is speaking about the Lord. So for us, as the church, as the tabernacle of the Lord, so there is a pattern that the Lord has for this current tabernacle, which is the church. And sevenhood and submission forms part of this entire body, of this entire building that the Lord is building. So servants, it means the house in the house of the Lord. There are not many thrones; there is but one master. And the rest of us, we are a population of servants, alright? Okay, so that's where we came from, from the last teaching. We also looked at Galatians, chapter 4, verse number one. Can you show us, please? Please read Galatians.
Galatians 4, verse 1, from the New King James Version. "Now I say that the heir, as long as he is a child, does not differ at all from a slave, though he is master of all; but is under guardians and stewards until the time appointed by the Father."
Alright, please continue.
Verse 3. "Even so, when we were children, we were in bondage under the elements of the world; but when the fullness of the time had come, God sent forth his Son, born of a woman, born under the law."
Let's hear the verse number one. "Now I say that the heir, as long as he is a child, does not differ at all from a slave, though he is a master of all," right? Verse 2, "but is under guardians and stewards until the time appointed by the Father." So we saw that even Nabantwana, when they are still children, they are regarded as slaves. And umoyengalufundisile, oguti, they are the possession of their parents, amen. Up until the appointed time, ebekue obaba, ogutige, this is the time oguti atate over. So it means, not as we grow, ngapansi kwen lughankulunkulu, there is a leadership ebekiwe ngapamigue tu, to which efaisiwa, ogutisene yane si, si, submitte uyon, amen. Alright, so nimala ogutige, namslanje, sibuke another subsection within the church governance and spiritual protocol. The subject here, namslanje, dina na 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 planting of the Lord, amen. And i foundation, ye etu, sithola, sijwai tholagu Isaiah, chapter 61, verse number 3.
Isaiah 61, verse 3, from the New King James Version. "To console those who mourn in Zion, to give them beauty for ashes, the oil of joy for mourning, the garment of praise for the Spirit of heaviness, that they may be called children of righteousness, the planting of the Lord, that he may be glorified."
Amen. Yakalogutige, oguzesibene understanding, epheleleyo, zotelusikale from verse number one, we are going to build up from verse one all the way to verse number 3, amen, Isaiah.
Isaiah 61, verse 1. "The Spirit of the Lord God is upon me; because the Lord has anointed me to preach good tidings to the poor; he has sent me to heal the broken-hearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives and the opening of the prison to those who are bound; to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord and the day of vengeance of our God, to whom comfort, to comfort all who mourn; to console those who mourn in Zion, to give them beauty for ashes, the oil of joy for mourning, the garment of praise for the Spirit of heaviness, that they may be called trees of righteousness, the planting of the Lord, that he may be glorified."
Amen. Teseke onabazalwa nindlin.
Amen.
Amen. Namasubanjua makanzobseka. Amen. So sibuka la ingo diga Isaiah. Nimslanje sijwai background, oguti siku luma ngoba, nimasiku luma ngoba Isaiah, amen, right? So Isaiah is a prophet, and ma besi peka, nopegu Isaiah, chapter 1, verse number 1, ustela ngitaiming, oguti Isaiah, wey prophetanini. Yes, so ogukuluma ngaku Isaiah, it spans from four kings. Inkosi um, inkosi ekala from, inkosi o, verse 1. The vision of Isaiah, the son of Amos, which is so concerning Judah and Jerusalem in the days of Uzziah. So bugak, ukale, oguti akulumbe from the days of Uzziah, uchothem, o eheze noheze kia, the kings of Judah. So it means, iin, ogusebenza, wa inkosi mesebenze, within the period yamakosi aufo. Now, it does not mean ogutige, wakala, oguprophetanga skati, gubusa ngongo ye wan, gugu, gubusa uzea. But we don't know exactly, oguti, u ministrya ke ekala ninipati, we are given a timeline. So ma abegue uzo funda i bipeli, ndigya ksesalok, oguti uspendi skati, leesugankulunkulu. La usungawazu kuweka out i range, i skati, oguti, probably, kwagwe skati singa kanani. By looking at the book of Chronicles or the book of Kings, oguti, o, for example, ozea, lia shoi isugankulunkulu, ma opega o Chronicles, oguti, wakala, oguti abuse at the age of sixteen, and then he reigned for fifty-two years. So already laposuyabon, oguti, utem one out of four, it lasted for fifty-two years. It gives you ilokuza, i glimpse, oguti, skatisa singa kanani, right? If you follow the same trend, you can be able to work out, oguti, this is a range of, moze opega, the reigning of kings. About the upper, the lower limit and the upper limit of this pen, ay kusona, should even, you can even learn the political climate ekona, kachi utasikati leso, by learning, oguti, kwagwenza kala ni, ngitkati zalama kosu, uzaya uchothem, eheze noheze kia. So that is a period of one hundred and thirteen years. Ma be uzo, uzo kupeka konke according to the book of Chronicles, no, 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 no Kings, just to work out. But again, joba tenksilok, oguti, lo one hundred and thirteen years, awusho oguti, o Isaiah, wa propheta, from year one to one hundred and thirteen. But it gives you, oguti, wae pagati na pagati, kwalusu skatles. We don't know exactly, oguti, kwa tati skatisa esgana na ministrya. Now, this is important, oguzuwa zuka understand that i climate, oguti, wey kuluma, unkulunkulu ngapansiwa zipi izimo, amen. Right, so that is the location. Now, ma abe opega ge, the geography, oguti. Now, o Isaiah, yes, we know, oguti, ngalezi ikati lezi, i kingdom, yase, yaga Israel, we know, oguti, yakiwu ama tribes of twelve, angit, right? And we know, oguti, inkosi biokali, inkosi saule, and then kwasukulandela, o King David. And then after that, kwasuguba, o King Solomon. And during the reign of King Solomon, kwen zagalani, unkulunkulu, wey ban uenigeze, o Israel, oguti, ban nga tatwa, amakosi, and even umtetoa Israel, wa uten, abanga tata amakoska zanga pani. So o Solomon, o transgressa, lo umteto loyo. And ma be opega, impila kwa Solomon, is very interesting, because inkosi, imvumeliluku te enza izindo eziningi, and to taste impilo, right? And he also gave him wisdom, ma opega, is is kalo sake, so so kamba nekosu, wakala kala. Because wakala oklakani pa, and inkosi yamunigeza i wisdom to judge his people, right? But then ma be opega, oguhamba, uhuhambalaka nekosu, eklineni, siyato, oguti, because of these wives, eliti isugankulunkuluwe, he took about three hundred, three hundred occupants, and also seven hundred wives. So yabon, oguti, each these wives, ai fika, ezo, ezo, shlangana nay, o Solomon in marriage, ayen afiki, ehamba wote, but they came with their gods. So we find the shrines of the gods of the surrounding nations being erected in Israel because of i covenant, o Solomon ayenza through okshatana la bantube sfaza, unkulunkulayete agangenzek. Now, sithola ge lapo, because now, yabon, oguti, spiritual authority, oguti, unkulunkulu, neskati ebeka lo umteto loyo, wevimbela, oguto, Israel, anangeni, we adachi, oguti, yes, anangeni, we adachi, eza, ngogo shipa abaye onkulunkulu. So impilwenka Solomon, siyakthola lok, oguti, kienzek, kaseklineni. So i judgment, igege, ayefika, again, oguti, because kwen zileloko, unkulunkulu uti, uti i kingdom, uzo ishuganisa kabili. Then, uti because of my servant, o David, uhiise, kwasala ama kingdoms, ama nations, au tu, ogawa ba, u Judah, kanyee, no Benjamin, that was the southern kingdom, e, ne capital, essentially Jerusalem. And then the rest of the ten tribes, aka what we call, u is, u isu angalo kusano go Israel nowadays. Then, in that instance, igege, sestola ge, ama kingdoms au tu are divided. Now, coming back to Isaiah. O Isaiah ge, o propheta, ye boga Israel, kota, he is in Judah, and i profesiake, uyenza, elo, e Jerusalem, right? So now, that is the physical scope of Isaiah, agade, ekuluma kuson. Now, ma abe opuka, opuka the book of Isaiah, siyonge. It's a very interesting book. Ungai buka, jenge synopses, o kanyee, im samarie i bipeli lonke. Because ma abe u ibuka from chapter one, inama chapter 66. Ma abe opega from chapter one to chapter 66. Ikrishe ikokele lonke i bipeli in one, ma buzoi buka ikowutwe ngalo nindlen. Ziniki zinto ek, ek kuluma yo. But ma abe opega, yes, it was a book, or rather, ama zwih, kankulunkulu, ayekuluma ngalisa skati, kati skuluma ngasuka amakosla, kati skuluma ngaku, ngao laufo. But ma opega, the scope, the prophetic scope, it spans from eternity to eternity, ma opega, ilikala tepalanga, zoktaze lutiganjan. Now, i, i, ogukuyoni ingo diga Isaiah. One of the major things sitholayo, ili wesikibiza ngama messianic prophecies akon. Siyathola, oguti, uye nu Isaiah, o predictai, o kanyee, ueyashongo, moyaga unkulunkulu, ekuluma ye virgin birth. Because o Isaiah, chapter 7, verse number fourteen, wa kona, ilapa ekuluma kona, ngay virgin, betulusu verse lewona, Isaiah, chapter 7, verse number fourteen.
Isaiah 7:14.
Yes.
"Therefore the Lord himself will give you a sign. Behold, the virgin shall conceive and bear son, and shall call his name Emmanuel."
Alright, so this is one of the prophecies akamunga, ngalezi skatles, sika Isaiah. Now, in order to appreciate loku, kupela, o seven hundred, over seven hundred years before, this is prophetos ifulfilek. Kodo unkulunkulu, ueyese kuluma ngoche Jesu, ngalezi ikati sika Isaiah, enga kafiki, alright? So ina kongetige, ma be ungena kuwe nu Isaiah, uyawazu ungena, uguazu kthola e wider scope i bipeli, ugyena ka pagati, amen. So he speaks about the virgin birth, inga genzik. And then ebese ekuluma, even na ngokuufa, kwen kosu chesu. A chapter, guningi, biavela, nda uni ezasuga shugeene. But ma opega, i chapter nyango, chapter 53, ilapa ekuluma kona, ngani about, oguufa kwanu, wen kosu chesu, about the passion of Christ. Ngasbergue, o Isaiah, chapter 53. Just pick it up from verse number 10 to verse number 11.
Isaiah 53, verse 10. "Yet it bleeds the Lord to bruise him; he has put him to grief. When you make his soul an offering for sin, he shall see his seed; he shall prolong his days; and the pleasure of the Lord shall prosper in his hand. He shall see the labor of his soul and be satisfied. By his knowledge, my righteous servant shall justify many, for he shall be there iniquities."
Open this verse left from verse number one to verse number five.
Verse one. "Who has believed our report? And to whom has the arm of the Lord been revealed? For he shall grow up before him as a tender plant and as a root out of ground, out of dry ground. He has no form of calmliness; and when we see him, there is no beauty that we should desire him. He is despised and rejected by men, a man of sorrows and acquainted with grief; and we hid, as it were, our faces from him; he was despised, and we did not esteem him. Surely he has borne our griefs and carried our sorrows; yet we esteemed him, stricken, smitten by God, and afflicted. But he was wounded for our transgressions; he was bruised for our iniquities; the chastisement for our peace was upon him; and by his stripes we were healed."
Kalu me sanganjalo, kiscrening. So now, utige, but he was wounded for our transgressions; he was bruised for our iniquities; the chastisement for our peace was upon him; and by his stripes we were healed. So now, o Isaiah lo, he is speaking back then, o kuluma ngengosi, u Jesu Christ, enga kafiki, amen. So yabon, oguti, unkulunkulu, wey menzele, umunsah, oguti, even eklesiskati ayekuso, waguazu amkipilenka pani eskatin, amkombise izindo ezisai, yes, waga. Because litini isugankulunkulu, litu, o David did not ascend to heaven. But he heard the Lord speaking, saying, "The Lord said to my Lord, 'Sit at my right hand, until I make all your enemies your footstool.'" So now, sibuka i apili tikankulunkulu, ogut, uyawazu, oguti, umut amtate, ela eskatin, ami ise pambili, no ma foot apinde, amsheli ise at his will, alright? So we caseka David, now, ukuwiango seven hundred and ten lapo, and then umoyengwele, ma abe ese, ese, esbe seven, zisa abapostol, u kuluma, ngikatu, u kuluma ku x chapter two, lok, ma abe opita ekaza ngere resurrection from the dead. Ukota leo passage, i scripture. So u kuluma, oguti, unkulunkulu unay, uni ability, waguazu, amen, zu David, ela, nimslaben, awazu kuuzwa, unkulunkulu kututini, eses ruin. Uti did not ascend to heaven, right? So now, it's the same case igege, yenzeka, ku 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 Isaiah, ogut, nay, back then, the Lord gave him e ability, yoguti, awazi, oguti, angeni, kuelka moya, akulume ngengema sufferings, kame Sayah, enga kafiki, alright? So now, he speaks about the death of the Lord. Now, alaklini lapo, opinde akulume ngere resurrection, futi. We get the picture of the resurrection, ku yona i ingo di, kha Isaiah. Ma opega i passage, sithwa ele, Isaiah, chapter six, ngalo osu verse lewena.
Isaiah, chapter six, verse one.
Yes.
"In the year that King Uzea died, I saw the Lord sitting on a throne, high and lifted up; and the train of his robe filled the temple. Above it stood seraphim; each one had six wings; with two he covered his face; with two he covered his feet; and with two he flew. And one cried to another and said, 'Holy, holy, holy is the Lord of hosts; the whole earth is full of his glory.' And the post of the door was shaken by the voice of him who cried out; and the house was filled with smoke. So I said, 'Woe is me, for I am undone; because I am a man of unclean lips; and I dwell in the midst of a people of unclean lips; for my eyes have seen the king, the Lord of hosts.'"
My eyes have seen the king, the Lord of hosts. So now, la, he is giving a glimpse, or rather, of i picture, yet round kankulunkulu, amen. Nsena mabazalwa, nagot? Amen. Ubona i, i glimpse, or i picture, yet round kankulunkulu, okay? Now, ma abe izu, kankulunkulu landela, e ufundi ingo di kachon, uchon, u kuluma, ngale, ngale passage, i scripture. Oguti, lo, o Isaiah ambona echesi, eshalunso kosu, kwagwe inkosu chesu, amen. It's the Lord, alright? So now, and then ma opega ge, o Revelation, chapter 3, o verse number 20, no 21, wa kona, ngalusu verse.
Revelation 3, verse 20. "Behold, I stand at the door and knock. If anyone hears my voice and opens the door, I will come in to him and dine with him, and he with me. To him who overcomes, I will grant to sit with me on my throne, as I also overcame and sat down with my father on his throne."
Amen. Now, "to him who overcomes, I will grant to sit with me on my throne, also as I also overcame and sat with my father on his throne." So now, this is the promise, inkosu chesu ayenzo, to the church, right? This is the church of Laudezia. Angit, la, o kuluma to the seven churches. Akale ngengebandala se Ephesus, e akulume ngesetiti salo. And then ebese ekuluma kama weaknesses alo, nezindo angeko helping us. We know, oguti, ebandala se Ephesus, o kuluma, oguti, they've left their, their first love, amen. And then ebese abasebanigeza i encouragement, or rather, abanigeza i warning, yoguti, uma benga buyeli, we, we, we position niabo to the first love, uzo wenzanjan, uzo susa, ilam stand, yabo, amen. So lapo ge, o kuluma about the first church. And then, this one is the church of Laudezia. O kuluma, oguti, leli bandala, leli, ma be ekala evula, I believe, verse number 15, wa kona. O kuluma ngesetiti saleni bandala, oguti, e, weyala, oguti, linjalanilukuwa, muti, "I know your works, that you are neither cold nor hot; I wish you, I wish you were cold or hot. So then, because you are lukwarm and neither cold nor hot, I will vomit you out of my mouth." So that's the state of this church, ibandla, ele, ele lukwarm. And then ebese akubeg, over seventeen. "So because you say, 'I am rich; have become wealthy and have need of nothing; and do not know that you are wicked, miserable, poor, blind, and naked; I counsel you to buy from me gold refined in fire, that you may be rich; and white garment, that you may be clothed; that the shame of your nakedness may not be revealed; and anoint your eyes with eye self, that you may see.'" Okay, so that's the state, saleni bandala leli. Oguti, ibandala leli, eli obile, e, ele neither hot, cold nor hot. And then inkosi kuluma, oguti, "I counsel you to buy from me gold, alright, that is refined in fire, that you may be rich; and white garment, that you may be clothed." Because la, gune, gune, gunes, gune hypocritical spirit in this church, kwa manje, gune ogu, gune ogu zukholisa, yabo. Uti ibandala leli, jelutili, ogili, kanti, li naked. La, gune, 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 gune illusion of amar riches, ibandala leli, jelutilina, koh, kantali na. La, gune, gune illusion, yes, sight, guleli ibandala leli. Ibandala leli, jelutili abona, kantali boni. Inkosu chesu, iti suganike, la dikona, nizekmina. Then mina, masenfilek mina, "Buy from me gold." Now, how can you buy from God? Because, angit, ma be uzo tenga, fe kubekona umutota Isaiah, nozo, no, 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 umutai si, right? Masakzoba kona, no mutozo tenga. "He preached," and then, "He preached," So now, when the Lord is saying, "Buy from me," how do we buy from the Lord? Now, he is speaking about faith. "He preached," it is written, "He preached," but it is said, "He preached," "He preached," and then, it is written, "He preached," "He preached," So it is written, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," which is with the created world, the corruptible world. It is said, "He preached," So we are speaking about gold refined in fire, and that you may be rich. So now, these are the riches, not according to the standard of the world, but these are the riches according to the standard of God who is speaking. Now, "White garments that you may be clothed; that the shame of your nakedness may not be revealed." Now, who was the first person to be naked? It is Adam, when he sinned. "He sinned." "He sinned." So it means, "He sinned." So, "He sinned." So, "The Lord," "He preached," "He preached," so he is speaking about repentance. "He preached," So now, "He preached," Now, "That the shame of your nakedness may not be revealed; and anoint your eyes with eye-salve that you may see." So, "He preached," "He preached," "For we do not walk by sight, but we walk by faith." So, "He preached," "He preached," but it is written, "He preached," and it is written, "He preached," "He preached," and it is written, "He preached," from the authority of the high priest. "He preached," "He preached," and then, it is said, "He preached," "A light from heaven that shone around him; and then, he was blind." Then, "He was blind." "He was blind." "He was blind for three days and three nights." "And then he begins to communicate with Ananias." "He preached," "He preached," So it means, "He preached," "He preached," "But according to God, he was blind." "And up until," "He preached," "He preached," So it means, "That stretching forth of the hand of Saul, of Ananias, but it was the hand of the Lord, a remover in, Ananias." "He preached," So, "That is sight according to God." Now, "He preached," "As many as I love, I rebuke and chasten; therefore be zealous and repent." Alright, so that's the message, "He preached." "He preached," 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 "Just because he was blind." So this is love according to the standard of God. "And as many as I love, I rebuke and chasten; therefore be zealous and repent." Okay, so it means, this church, at this age, I don't know, "He preached," but it had yet to learn love according to the standard of God. Because, "As many as I love, I rebuke and chasten; therefore be zealous and repent." So, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," Right, so it is said, "He preached," "Behold, I stand at the door and knock. If anyone hears my voice and opens the door, I will come in to him and dine with him, and he with me." And then, it is said, "He preached," "To him who overcomes, I will grant to sit with me on my throne, as I also overcame and sat on my father's throne." So, "He preached," "We have to overcome," and then, "He preached," "He preached," "Also, I overcame and sat with my father, with my father on his throne." So, "He preached," Alright, so now, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," Okay, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "From eternity." Okay, so, "I would like to believe," "Yes, we can do it." "I would like to believe," "It was a picture of a crest of a sea." "He preached," "And I would like to believe," "He preached," "He preached," So it means, "He preached," "He preached," "Of the resurrection from the dead of the resurrected Christ." And then, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," So, I was just giving, "He preached," and it is interesting, "He preached," "It was coded, the gospel." We find the version that that and the resurrection coded in that book. And, "He preached," "Like Isamar, here is salvation." Amen. So, "He preached," So now, coming back to our focal, our point of discussion for today. "He preached," "Let's go from verse number one to verse number two." "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "Chapter ten, verse number thirty-eight." "How God anointed Jesus with the Holy Ghost and power, that he went about doing good." So, "He preached," "He preached," "Chapter sixty-one, from verse number one to verse number two." "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," And then, yes, "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because the Lord has anointed me to preach good tidings to the poor. He has sent me to heal the broken-hearted, to proclaim the year, the liberty to the captives, and the opening of the prison to those who are bound." So, yes, verse number one and verse number two. "He preached," What is very interesting, "He preached," "He preached," "Chapter four, verse number eighteen to twenty-one."
Luke four, verse eighteen. "The Spirit of the Lord is upon me, because he has anointed me to preach the gospel to the poor. He has sent me to heal the broken-hearted, to proclaim liberty to the captives, and recovery of sight to the blind, to set at liberty those who are oppressed, to proclaim the acceptable year of the Lord. Then he closed the book, and gave it back to the attendant and sat down; and the eyes of all who were in the synagogue were fixed on him."
Alright, so, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "And then, it is written, 'We are fasting for forty days and forty nights.' And then, it is said, "'He returned in the power of the Spirit.'" And then, "He preached," And then, "He preached," "They gave him the scroll of Isaiah." Right? And then, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," So, "He preached," "He preached," "The same with the Spirit of the Lord is upon me." So it means, "He preached," "The exact portion," "He preached," Now, "He preached," "We, the audience, are Jews." Right? "He preached," "He preached," "The scripture is fulfilled in your hearing." Okay, so, yes, "And he began to say to them, 'Today, this scripture is fulfilled in your hearing.'" So, now, "He preached," in the book, it is in sixty-six books, by Berlin. Now, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," And then, "He preached," "He preached," So, "He preached," "It was one of the ways," "He preached," "He preached," Because, "For the mere fact, we call it, and we refer it, what is fulfilled in your hearing." It means, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," Amen. "He preached," Right, so, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," So, "He preached," "He preached," "Chapter sixty-one, from verse number one to verse number two." "He preached," Amen. Right? "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "From verse number one to verse number two." Then, "He preached," "Oh, you have a focal point here." "He preached," "To console those who mourn in Zion, to give them beautiful ashes, the oil of joy for mourning, the garment of praise for the spirit of heaviness, that they may be called 'cheese of righteousness,' the planting of the Lord, that he may be glorified." Amen. Right, so now, the focal point here, "Part eight," I think it's the last part, that it... Okay, the first part, it speaks about, "He preached," And then, "He preached," "That they may be called the cheese of righteousness, the planting of the Lord, that he may be glorified." So, now, "He preached," "The planting of the Lord." "He preached," Okay, "He preached," "They are the words, the cheese of righteousness." That's one, and then, "He preached," "They are the planting of the Lord, that he may be glorified." Okay, so when he speaks about Zion, "He preached," Israel, and "He preached," and "He preached," is referring to Israel as a whole. "He preached," "He preached," And then, "He preached," And then, "He preached," "They are going to be my planting, the planting of the Lord." And then, "He preached," "That he may be glorified." Okay, so now, "He preached," "He preached," So, "He preached," Right, so, "He preached," "He preached," So he is speaking to Israel, he is communicating to the church, through Israel. Right, so, "He preached," "The cheese of righteousness, the planting of the Lord, that he may be glorified." Amen. So now, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "Before we can move on." Right? "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "Because we will lose," "In meaning," "Because we will lose." Okay, now, "He preached," "He preached," "This term, planting, naturally," "Planting," Okay, "He preached," "He preached," Alright, "He preached," Amen, "He preached," Alright, "He preached." Yes, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," And then, "He preached," So, "He preached," "It refers to the act of setting something. It can be a seed or a shoot in the ground for growth purpose." Yeah, "He preached," And it means to figuratively, it means to establish or fix in position. Right? "He preached," Yeah, "He preached," Yeah, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," Yeah, "Unless he speaks," "He speaks," Amen. "He preached," So, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "But in chesty with fruit." Yeah, "He preached," "He preached," "But in chesty, we say, 'Vunwe.'" Yes, "He preached." Yes, so, "He preached," "He preached," Okay, "He preached," "He preached," "So long as the earth remains," "While the earth remains, seed, time, and harvest, cold and heat, winter and summer, and day and night shall not cease." Amen. So, okay, so, "He preached," "He preached," "And," "He preached," "Seed time, and also there is harvest." And it is written, "He preached," "He preached," Yeah, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," Yes, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," Right? And then, "From the," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," Because, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," And then, "He preached," "He preached," "It is a compounding effect." "He preached," "Then he preached," "And then, he preached," "He preached," And then, "He preached," And then, "He preached," Yeah, "He preached." So, "He preached," "He was moving from the," "And then, when," "From the," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "And then, he preached," Now, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," Yeah, "He preached," "He preached," "He preached," And, "He preached," 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 Yeah, "So, now, to cut a long story short, he preached, on the side of David, and then, he preached," Yeah, "So, "He preached," "He preached," "The last of the eye." Okay, "He preached," "He preached,"
Now, this term eti planting, yes, basically like generally speaking naturally, oguti ikuluma ngo, just ukchala, kuswazi. Now, from this scripture, from this way, this term, we say, we say, we come on this Hebrew, it is matter, and mabe ulpeka leli kamalele, sizo bona, it term, iti planting, le-levela three times. Kota, mawo ulpeka lonali lotwa, eh, ngitabango, tige, i- i- ulimlesheper, lulu notileka kulungoba, liyakwazu, tika ma li lotwa, liyakwazu kchala, nisa izin dey intatu at once, jengaleli kamanjie. Lihamba ne meaning, eh, three, likuluma ngani, likuluma ngai, li lotwa, likuluma ngani ngai planting place. Okay, yes, likuluma planting place, and then basically likuluma ngani ngai act of planting, plantation. Amen. So, shuti mabe, iti, mabe levela, lihamba, le-encompass, le-ikuluma ngalisa, zinto lesi zonatu at once. So, sahamba ndawo nyangit, right, so, sizo, 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 sizo bona umzerelo konamanch. Okay, Isaiah swesweze manj, alright, eh, three in one, okay, so, the term e three in one. So, mabe ife la iti matter, ikuluma ngani ngenda wo, eh, basically kuluma ngasenza, so ukchala, eh, basically kuluma ngo ukchali wefuti, yabo, the term le. La, mawo peka, mawo peka planting place, uh, first Kings chapter twenty one verse number one to three, that's what they call him.
First Kings twenty one verse one. And it came to pass after these things that Naboth, the, the Jezreelite, had a vineyard which was in Jezreel, next to the place of Ahab, king of Samaria. So, Ahab spoke to Naboth, saying, give me your vineyard, that I may have it for a veget- vegetable garden, but it is near, next to my house, and for it, I will give you a vineyard better than it. Or, if it seems good to you, I will give you its worth in money. But Naboth said to Ahab, the Lord forbid that I should give you the inheritance of my fathers to you. So, Ahab went into his house, sullen and displeased, because of the word which Naboth, the Jezreelite, had spoken to him, for he had said, I will not give you the inheritance of my fathers. And he lay down on his, on his bed, and turned away his face, and would not, and would eat no food. But Jezebel, his wife, came to him and said to him, why is your spirit so sullen that you eat no food? He said to her. He said to her, because I spoke to Naboth the Jezreelite, and said to him, give me your vineyard for money or else, if it pleases you, I will give you another vineyard for it. And he answered, I will not give you my vineyard. Then Jezebel, his wife, said to him, you now exercise your authority over Israel. Arise, eat food, and let your heart be cheerful, I will give you the vineyard of Naboth the Jezreelite. And she wrote letters in her, in Ahab's name, sealed them with his seal, and sent the letters to the elders and the nobles who were dwelling in the city of Naboth.
Amen, siabong. If you saw verse indawo, la, oguti, like mawo peka indaba lesi vin, oh, esasbango la o Ahab, because, then unapoth, when esipin, esiseto zewak. So, it means indawo la wak, la wak chalwe konna, it was a place near o Ahab. Amen, so, it's, it's a place, right, so, now, mawo peka la, la, uh, lulu double, uh, iti ge, next to the palace of Ahab, and it came to pass, eh, after these things that Naboth the Jezreelite had a vineyard which was in Jezreel, next to the place of Ahab, king of Samaria. So, like okunyangan, guess, vin, esaseto zane, nenda, nenda, nenda ole u Ahab, ayake kuion, right, planting place, matter, bamback, right, so, now, mawo peka la, u Ahab, ufunukchata, lesi, si vin, lesi, sika, sika napoth, ufunuku stenga ngemali. Yarizinwa infalele le ves, la, payana, just ukhuaylaita le indaba, oguti, usatanu na itendisi, oguti, afunukchata izin doza pagade, amnigezi mali, yala, imchabeni.
The time of the evening sacrifice. And then we know at 3pm. So scripture So it means Now While men slept. So The spirit of stupor that is upon the church. Is there, is here to create a window for planting of something. And somebody must wake up. Because Because And Why? Because there's danger. Ma sektua Ma sektua Why? Right? Now, the day of the Lord has been pronounced. And we have been taught It's the day of the Lord. It will be the simultaneous coming of the Lord. A hamba back to back is good and bad news. But still somebody sleeping. The question First Peter chapter four verse number seven to ten.
First Peter four verse seven. But the end of all things is at hand. Therefore be serious and watchful in prayers. And above all things have fervent love for one another. For love will cover a multitude of sins. Be hospitable to one another without grumbling. As each one has received a gift, minister it to one another as good stewards of the manifold grace of God.
Amen. Because The kuluma over, over the house. Because which is not a choice. At the end of all things is at hand, therefore be serious and be watchful in prayers. But And as we In this See a kuluma Ngama, ngama dimensions Ilo, i prophetically If I were the forecast Oh, but Ma uchelo Oh, but Where Respond Oh, but Ah, who's with the focus Take And then Now I'll respond So in notion Yet wrong of When it comes to So man In the Sit And Where Awazi Ilo Kamanga System And Ucheli And then And then I was Go Go March Now And then And then Utuzo Gen Exam Uzo Kumu Frustrated. Yeah, but So And man Depending on Immortal Yeah, but The Kona Easy Oh, ah Got Is Ufunde Usukno Build Up So that Learning Overload So man And System We Ufufunda Got Ufundela With three hours. Because Three hours examination. Oh, but We Three hours examination One To determine Oh, but No more Got Ubuga Ratio Yes, cut. Oh, but It's three hours. Oh, prepare And then for a preparation is an entire year. Yeah, but Got Uzo Fanu Oh, but Ufundi Within three hours. So Bush So in Easy See Mahala Because Ubuga Ubuga Level Oh, but And then Oh, but Let's So Kuni Ss Sinigazel Oh, but So Oh, but Exam Oh, but Three hours. So One Who's Oh, but Three hours Yeah, but So man Awazi Ufugbo So Ube Ilo Unga fund Unga attend. Yeah, but Ungenziluto. And then Oh, but Gen One week before exam So Yeah, because You want make it. Yeah, but So And Liti The kuluma If faith If faith it comes by what? By By hearing Hearing the word of God. Yeah, but So Because Man Liti Liti Inok walked with God. For three hundred years. And he was no more because God took him. Yeah, but Oh, but Une window Ka Ka three hundred years. La kona Uino Why And Got Umwe Lu Versus Ka Three hundred years. And then Verse Incidents Yoktatuwa Guaku Inok. The church is going to be ruptured. Yeah, but Yes, cut. Let's Got Eh Second It's like Oh, but He lived for sixty five years. Five Five twenty three Ka Genesis. Oh, but He lived for, for, for sixty five years and then he picked up Mathusalem. And then he walked with God for three hundred years. And he was no more because God took him. Yeah, but So Yeah, but La Ukuzalo Uh And then it marked the start of three hundred years. And then Oh, but Incidents Oh, but Mthatu Inok. Yeah, but It interest Igle Window Ka Yeah, but Oh, but Na Kuluma Hebrews Eleven Verse Five and six. Cause Ungena Lapo Oh, but Before A tatwa Translate To Inok. Wa Ba Eto Wa Yeah, but And Without faith. It is impossible to please God. So Between the birth of Mathusalem and the three hundred years. Kukona Le Yok Yoktogo No Yeah, but Oh, but And then Maso Incidents Yoktatuwa Guga Yeah, but And Then Obana Two witnesses. Kona Inok No Elijah One Yeah, but Got In the Natusis Otatwa. And Second Usuku Second Window Ka Three hundred years. Lapo Kona Yoktogo Zis No Oh, but Sifinya Lo Ila Eh Si Li Sketches Cut Oh, but In the Philippians Chapter One Verse Number
Philippians One Verse Only let your conduct be worthy of the gospel of Christ. So that whether I come and see you or am absent, I may hear of your affairs. That you stand fast in one spirit with one mind striving together for the faith of the gospel.
Amen. Oh, but Only let your conduct be worthy of the gospel of Christ so that whether I come and see you or am absent, I may hear of your affairs. That you stand fast in one spirit. Man Oh, but Because Oh, but Oh, but Eh Finally That you may stand fast in one spirit. Oneness. So And With one mind striving together for the faith of the gospel. Yeah, but So Kulu Kulu Que Yeah, but Got Man Nebandla Corporately. Oh, but This faith Finally Oh, but If In In One mind and in one spirit. So And Yalbona It Satan Like Oh, but Nay Principle. Oh, but Kukona If faith Oh, ah Is A Got Ushobololu Olu We Yeah, but According to Usam Hundred and thirty three. The principle Of unity. Oh, but Ma Besi He commands a blessing. Lab. Yeah, but So now Kukona Lusho Believe The faith of the gospel. Akuluma At Akuluma Oh, but Is Is The oneness of spirit and mind. Yeah, but So Is Figure Sifunutis Break That oneness. So that If In Corner For the pouring of this faith. And And The functional weight Lapan Of striving. Yeah, but In a picture Ye Oh, but Etwa Eh I Good Eh Enam Carriage Oh, but There's one engine Pambele. Got And Got I Energy. Okay. I Anyway. Yeah, but I Got Sorry Oh, but And Oh, but I Got Carriage Ne Package Ila We Yeah, but So it means the train is pushing, is striving together towards a certain direction. Eh, odu. Yeah, but So ma Be Kulu Striving together. And It's not a dis-fragmented train, but it's a train. Eh, odu. Eh, la Eh Direction Eh 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 Yeah, but So Sifunutis Sifugani Sen Yeah, but Is Sifunutis Sifugani Oh, but Sibizwe Ngani Ka Crest. Yeah, but Skatoli Sambulu Leso. So It Because I Yeah, but Ayikinde Is Mzimbe. Ayiko. I Is Ali Oh, but Lili Se Lili So that the whole body Eh Is Odu Information To Then So Each and every organ is serving for the benefit of the body. Yeah, but And then Unity Ya Ina Oh, but We Eh Must Esteem others better than ourselves. Yeah, but So Uchalo Mondo Uya Lapo Concept Oh, but In Oh, but Where Stong David. Where Panz. And then Oh, but Uzo Paramisa Omu Um Esteem Better than yourself. And then Eh Yeah, but Now In Bill Eh Oh, but Striving together for the faith of the gospel. Now, what is this faith of the gospel? Eh In Lile Interpret Faith of the gospel. And Makuna Evangel. It speaks about the miraculous conception of the son, the death and the resurrection. Yeah, but So Oh, but Que Evangel. Oh, but Jongo Basila Sikoliwe Oh, but Christ Eh Wa Wa In Yes Yeah, but Man If Faith Ma Besi Hamba Oh, but One Sikkoliwe Sang Yeah, but Then In Dela Oh, but So This faith Eh It requires us the next stage. If Yeah Oh, but First Oh, but Oh, but Even up to the point of death. That's the next phase. And then Elanla It's a program. It program Anyway. Oh, but It's It's miraculous conception. Yeah, but Yes. And then Maso And then Oh, but Resurrection. So man See Kta Do Got As I Ngan Oh, but Logu Logu Kolo Ask Akuli Siktina Yeah, but So Yeah, but Is Illes Oh, but Three hundred years Ka Lapo Kona Oh, but Ma Oh, but Ufunde In As Got Guna This requires The Faith and the patience of the saints. Yeah, but So Fair About La Attributes. And Each and every day. Ma Each and every day Fair Oh, but We're striving for this faith. Sifuna A growth in patience. Because those are the attributes. As Oh, but Ngan Oh, but See Amen. Ah It Ah Yes Best Cover The act of planting. And The Spirit of stupor. And Mzimbe Oh, but Nama Yes See Vuke. Because Is System To Mzimbe Mzimbe Oh, but Usukule Yes. Amen. Come So In this term Gupina Ipin The Plantation itself. And Sapina Sa Kuluma Sis Eh Amen. So Oh, but It encompasses Lizi Do So First Verse Chapter Sixty One
Isaiah Sixty One For as the earth brings forth its bud.